2016. This meeting is, as I said, a committee of the whole meeting. If you are new to tuning into Board of Education meetings, what you can expect this evening is discussion, sometimes at quite a bit of depth and in quite a bit of detail about the items that are coming before the Board. Any items that the Board is ready to then vote on after our discussion will go on next week to a general meeting or a voting meeting, as some folks refer to it. But there will be no votes taken at the meeting this evening. It'll be just discussion, perhaps a request that administration get back to us with more information and so forth. If you are interested in our voting meetings, those will occur at the meeting following this one, so it'll be next week on the 10th rather of October.
Seven to seventeen.
Oops, sorry, we're off next week. I'm off by a week at our next meeting, which is the 17th of October. Thank you. If you are interested in following along on our agenda this evening, you can find, if you're in attendance in our room this evening with us, there are agendas and blue slips just outside the door on the table. If you are following along from home and you'd like an agenda, you can follow along with an agenda on our website. Those are always found on our website, which is www.lavoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab and drop down to Agendas, you can pick up tonight's agenda and follow right along with us. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips at this time. Are there any members of the audience who would like to participate in Audience Communication? Not seeing any. Alrighty. The next item on our agenda is our Committee of the Whole. I do not have any items under that area. Mrs. Oakwist, do you have anything for Committee of the Whole?
I just have one short point of privilege I'd like to add.
Go right ahead.
As the Board of Education is aware, we have a very important community event coming up next Thursday evening. Since we're not on air next Monday, I would just like to publicly share information with you that you should be receiving via email, via newspaper, and other venues. We are hosting a school funding forum, a town hall meeting, on Thursday, October 13th, at Franklin High School in the New Performing Arts Center. We are partnering with our colleagues in Plymouth Canton Schools, Wayne Westland and Van Buren, to host a very important and informative 90-minute town hall meeting. We're bringing in some outstanding and very knowledgeable speakers on this important topic. We will be talking about the current state of school funding in Michigan, the changes since Proposal A. We'll be talking about some short and long-term action steps regarding school funding in Michigan. And we will also be talking a bit about the recent Michigan Finance Study. Sometimes it's been referred to as the Adequacy Study. I will be sharing some information on that. There will be an opportunity for question and answer. Again, it will be 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the Franklin Performing Arts Center next Thursday, October 13th. We invite the community parents, business leaders, interested community members, anyone in our community or any of those communities, to please join us for this meeting. So we're looking forward to welcoming, hopefully, many, many to that important night.
Excellent. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add or any questions on this topic? No? Alrighty. Seeing none, we're going to move on to Item Three, our Finance Committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. We have three items before our group this evening, and the first one is the Audit Report on the 2015-16 Financial Statements. That will be presented by Allison Smith.
Hello. Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Before I invite our friends from Plant Moran to come up and go through the financial statements with us in detail, I thought I'd go over in general how we ended in 15-16. So with that, I'll pass out some handouts. There. Thank you. So this chart that's going around right now is our fund balance summary, and it's something you're probably used to seeing. So for the final budget amendment, I should start with our highlights. That's the exciting part. Our revenue for 15-16 came in $620,000 better than anticipated, or less than half a percent. A number of budget line items make up the $622,000 of revenue. The two main sources of note are, number one, property taxes. The district received a Wayne County tax settlement check on June 27th that was higher than anticipated. And the other was various state aid categoricals, some of which I went over with at our study session. And with that, it's hard to predict because the state, even through August, is making adjustments to those categorical lines. So on the expenditure side, we came in better by 1.5% or just under $2.2 million. And again, a number of lines make up that savings, the first being salary and benefits coming in better than anticipated, largely due to mid-year vacancies that we waited to fill. The other item is the non-employee-related expenditures, and large savings came through contracted substitutes, came in about $200,000 better than we have in the last three years, which was great. Our heating costs, electricity, came in better than anticipated. And maintenance supplies and transportation supplies, such as fuel, also came in better than anticipated. So the bottom line for us is a better-than-anticipated fund balance, which we're very happy to report. We're now over 5%. And as that relates to the early warning district, that puts us out of that target. So yeah, so that is good news. I'm going to invite Terry Pollak and Tom Marchesi to come up and join me now, and we'll go through the financial statements in detail.
Looks like we need to grab one more chair.
Good evening, everyone. It's our pleasure to be here this evening. So in the materials that are being distributed out, we have each of the formal deliverables from the annual independent audit process. So there is a copy of the basic financial statements, a copy of the federal awards single audit, the report to the Board that contains the required post-audit communications and a summary of any recommendations or informational items that we wanted to pass along. And then we also have, we'll have the full-color graph presentations that we'll be going through for the regular Board meeting that puts everything into even a more summarized detail. So just like to begin just with referencing just overall the audit process and the results of the audit. So within the main financial report, I'm happy to report that we've issued, once again, what's called an unmodified opinion. That is the clean opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we can give as your auditors, that we believe the financial statements are free of any material misstatement, and the presentation conforms to all of the required generally accepted accounting principles. Within the federal awards report, there are three additional opinion letters housed within that report document. The first just extends that opinion from the basic financial statements onto the schedule of expenditure of federal awards. And then there are also two opinion letters. The first is our consideration of your internal control and compliance environment overall, and that indicates that we did not identify any internal control deficiencies that we believe to be either significant or material, and did not identify any non-compliance conditions. And then the final opinion letter that is housed within the federal awards report speaks to the compliance on major program testing that we specifically did relative to the federal regulations applicable to those programs. And once again, no findings, no question costs, and no internal control deficiencies were identified. So across the board, from an audit standpoint, it is a squeaky-clean year, and obviously good positive financial results as well. So it's nice to share good news at these meetings. So I want to turn it over to Tom. I know our practice has generally been we'll walk you through the main components of the main financial report, and explain the contents, key highlights, and allow for any questions that you have. So as we're going through the discussion, please feel free to, you know, ask as we're moving, and if we're going into too much detail, give us the -- because it is a big report. And just to mention too, the reports are stamped as draft. The audit work is fully complete. The reports are with our printers right now, so we will have the final documents. They're making some just cosmetic improvements that are made in the final document, but the numbers disclosures and everything else is final, final.
So good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Tom Marchesi, and it's my fourth or fifth year on Lavonia, so it's nice to see you all again. I guess I'll start with the financial report with supplemental information. We'll start by looking at the Table of Contents. This just summarizes all the components of the financial report. And moving on towards the initial page, the Audit Opinion, as Terry said, it was an unmodified opinion this year, which is the highest level that we can provide. Going forward to Page Three, well, Page Four, I'm sorry, begins with the Management's Discussion and Analysis. So this section that runs through Page 14 just provides management with the opportunity to comment on any current year events or any points of stress that they'd like to point out to the readers of the financial statements. This just gives management the opportunity to summarize all the current year happenings that may provoke interest to the users. So I won't go into extreme detail with the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And moving on to Page 15. We begin with our Statement of Net Position. And the Statement of Net Position just basically consolidates all of the district's activity as opposed to the fund level, which would exclude certain components of the Statement of Net Position. I'll go into the details of what the differences are between the consolidated, the government-wide statements compared to the fund level, but I just want to point out a couple of highlights. So total assets and deferred outflows of resources is listed at $400 million this year, as opposed to total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources of $581 million. And that drives your total net position amount, which is posted as a negative $180 million this year. Now, that is primarily driven by the net pension liability that has come to fruition from Gatsby 68. And you can see that line item as $279 million this year, and that would be just your allocated share of the MIPSers' net pension liability.
And they're not picking on you. Everybody else winds up with their same proportional share of the bad news, and I'm not aware that there's any district in the state that winds up with a positive net position as a result. It's really put everybody into a deficit net position.
So the $279 million represents about 1.4% of the overall net pension liability that's allocated throughout the state.
Tom, may I interrupt you for just a moment?
Sure.
We talked about this at length last year, and Terry and Tom and Lisa went through and explained that. If you'd like us to review that again, we would be very happy to do that, if there's anyone who needs recollection on that topic. But you recall why that's slated in this area? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I know you went into more depth last year.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure we're all still on the same page and we all understand that.
It's still bad news, but it's old bad news.
Right. Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
So along with the net pension liability that is included on the consolidated government-wide statements, you also have the long-term liabilities, which is comprised basically of your bonds payable at year-end, along with bond-related obligations, and your employee compensation, employee-related accruals, which includes compensated absences and amounts due at the course of employees' termination or retirement. So in addition, capital assets, a $400 million number, that also includes $194 million of net capital assets. So that's the cost of capital assets less any depreciation that's accumulated. And the other number is $128 million restricted assets. That is primarily made up of unspent bond proceeds that the district is planning on spending on future capital projects. So moving on to the Statement of Activities, again, this focuses on the government-wide consolidated activities of the district. It's just the users of the financial statements usually find the fund level data more informative for the operations of the school district as compared to the Statement of Activities. So I'm not going to go into too much detail on the statement, but please, if you have any questions, let us know. Page 17 begins with the governmental funds balance sheet. So this is your fund level data, and I just want to point out the columns on this governmental funds balance sheet. They're delineated between the major funds and the non-major funds. So this year, the major, more significant funds were the General Fund, as always, the 2013 Bond Series I Fund, and then 2013 Bond Series II Fund. And a couple of highlights within the General Fund, we have total assets of $44.8 million. Among those assets, we have due from other governmental units, $21.8 million, and that consists of the July and August state aid payments primarily. Within cash and investments, you have another $22.3 million to basically represent the entire General Fund total assets. And the General Fund here is presented with the inclusion of the General Fund, the funded projects, and the Athletics Fund, just for clarification. Moving on to the liabilities of the General Fund, you have $35.6 million. And the major component of the liabilities is your accrued payroll-related liabilities, which represents your July and August employee payroll for teachers or any district employees that work through June 30th and are owed amounts throughout the summer. As far as the fund balance, so you'll see in the General Fund, it's mostly unassigned, $7.7 million. The remainder, $489,000, that represents the excess of the 16-17 budget that was passed, the excess of expenditures over revenue in the 16-17 budget that was passed in June 2016. A couple items that I want to touch upon for 2013 Bond Series I and II Funds, total assets are roughly $111 million, and those consist of unspent bond proceeds. So you can see that they're, again, in the restricted assets line. And if you move down the fund balance, the fund balances are about equivocal with the restricted assets, less the accounts payable in the Bond Series I Fund of $10 million. So your total restricted capital projects fund balance between the Series I and II Funds is approximately $100 million. And within the non-major column, we have just a couple of items in the fund balance that are either restricted or assigned, representing your building and repair or sinking fund of $13.8 million, along with your debt service and food service. Those also are restricted fund balances. Then we have assigned fund balances representing the center program and another capital projects Following the governmental funds balance sheet, we have reconciliations that basically they reconcile the fund level balance sheet to the government-wide Statement of Net Position. And all these items are going to be supplemental on the Statement of Net Position compared to the fund level statements that we just reviewed. So you have your capital assets and your bond obligations, along with a few other items. Statement of Revenue Expenditures on Page 19, Statement of Revenue Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance. Within the General Fund, there is total revenue of $151.5 million, and the total expenditures of $149 million. This led to a change, positive change in the fund balance of $4 million, which is pretty healthy increase compared, it doubled your fund balance at year-end for the General Fund.
And so as Allison referenced, you know, you would have been previous to this year on the watch list for the early warning legislation, and this puts you above that 5% level where you can move into not heightened monitoring at the state level.
And we see the decreases in the Series I Fund for the 2013 bond, and that just represents your spent bond proceeds, that you've incurred capital outlay costs for any capital projects that have occurred during 15-16. And in the Series II Fund, the activity essentially represents the issuance of the new bond, which was $76 million in 15-16. And the non-major funds also experienced a pretty healthy increase of $4 million. Again, those are comprised of the center program, capital projects funds that are not within 2013 Bond Series, along with food service and the debt service funds. We have another reconciliation that looks at reconciles the government-wide full accrual accounting to the fund level accounting on an income statement level. Again, you can see a few things on there that we had alluded to on the Statement of Net Position, such as depreciation-related capital assets and some of the decreases in bonds payable. On Page 21, this is a schedule for the Internal Service Fund, Health and Welfare Fund, and essentially this fund represents fringe benefits for employees at year-end. All the balances of this fund are for the benefit of fringe benefits for these employees. At year-end, you have $2.6 million in that position, which is earmarked for these fringe Page 22, we have the Statement of Revenue Expenses and Changes in Net Position for the Internal Service Fund, and you had, in 15-16, you had total operating expenses of $21.1 million, which is mostly related to the employee health benefits that were paid out by the district.
Yeah, and so when we're looking at this fund too, just relative to what's captured here, it's used for the fringe benefits, but it does not include any of the pension obligations. Those all are running through the other respective funds.
Pressing on to Page 24, these are the fiduciary funds of the district. The private-purpose trust fund represents the holdings of the district that are for private scholarships. And agency funds are assets belonging to the students in which the district acts in a fiduciary capacity. And the next element of financial statements I'd like to take a look at is just the disclosures. We have Note One, which is, just encapsulates all the accounting practices of the district and fund descriptions as related to like the functions of each individual fund. And this note runs all the way through Page 33. And I won't go into too much depth on Note One, but it does bring us to Note Two on Page 33, which involves the budgetary information of the district. So we're recorded by law to report any significant variances in the budget for 15-16 based on the final compared to the actual results of the district. There were no significant variances to report this year. Note Three represents, discloses any banking or deposit risks that the district may hold. And Lavonia had banking deposits of approximately $27.5 million at year-end, and they had also investments, which are reported on Page 36, representing $127 million of total banking deposits at year-end. Note Four is part of a new disclosure for 15-16, and it basically reports to the readers, provides indication of the fair value of investments held by the district at year-end. So this was not in the footnotes last year, but will be this year based on a new accounting standard that was passed.
So it doesn't change the valuation methods? It just has additional enhanced disclosure about how investments are valued?
The next note that I want to draw your attention to is Note Six for Capital Assets, with the Bond Projects Ongoing. This is on Page 38. With Bond Projects Ongoing, there were approximately $50 million in additions this year, and you can see that within the schedule right below the Note Six, there's a lot of big numbers in the middle columns that represents pretty significant activity this year. Again, it's mostly related to the Bond Projects. Note Nine for the bonded, this is for the long-term debt footnote. We have a schedule here that provides detail on all the district's long-term balances. And those long-term, the long-term debt is represented by the bonded debt, which is about $217 million, along with the employee comp accruals that are long-term, which I spoke upon earlier, related to the compensated absences and any other payouts that would occur at the end of the employee's relationship with the district. Moving on to Note 12, this is a disclosure that just describes the ongoing legal matters of the district and basically encapsulates any outstanding litigation ongoing during the 15-16 school year that we would require to be reported. And Note 13 is some recorded information involving the Michigan Public Schools' employers' retirement system, employees' retirement system, otherwise known as MIPSers. And it is numerous pages long, but I would just like to point your attention to a few of the items within here. So on Page 44, you can see that towards the bottom of the page, the net pension liability I mentioned earlier is about $280 million. Moving along on Page 47, this is another just disclosure representing a sensitivity test, saying if the actuary wanted to discount the pension liability at 7% versus 9%, they ultimately came to a conclusion that 8% was a reasonable number to arrive at the $280 million, but you can see the strong fluctuations with just a 1% increase or decrease. So again, this is a pretty significant estimate. And the $280 million represents solely the pension side of the MIPSers' liability. It doesn't have the OPAB or health or benefits of the participants. So moving on to Note 14, that is an element coming down the pipeline. So Gatsby 75 is going to require all school districts to include this OPAB liability of the retirement system on their Statement of Net Position at year-end. So that $279 million number may balloon to a pretty big amount when this pronouncement's put into effect.
So that would be all of the retiree healthcare benefits. Right now, the liability just contains the pension component. It doesn't contain the estimated cost of the health insurance that the retirees will receive.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
I assume that this would be then similar to when we had to report the pension portion of MIPSers, where it's not going to affect our district in any changing way.
Exactly.
It's a reporting situation.
That's exactly right.
And it's going to probably affect every single district similarly to the state of Michigan.
Absolutely. The accounting for it will be really virtually identical to the pension accounting. It just is implemented at a later date. They picked up part of the liability last year, and then they are phasing in in 2018 the health insurance portion.
Okay. What effect What effect do you see this having, if any, on our district at all? Even bond ratings or things along that line, or not really?
I honestly don't think that it's going to have much of an impact on the bond ratings. With the pension change, there was concern that that was going to impact bond ratings. What we, I guess, have seen and been told is that, you know, the bond market already knew about the state retirement system, and so even though it wasn't disclosed within the financial statements of each district, everybody understood the funding situation and the risk that the, you know, that the districts would be exposed to. So I wouldn't anticipate it's going to make, it's going to make bigger deficit numbers, but I really don't think it's going to cause any harm, and every district will be in the same boat as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Though I would say, just with regard to risk with the pension system, the one item that I think is important is to understand that right now, the contributions to keep the retirement payments and health payments liquid approximate about 35% of every district's payroll. And the state is doing direct funding to the retirement system, and then also out of the school aid fund right now, both this year and last year. And then they're also carving out another payment that goes directly to the districts that then gets paid back directly to the system. And so that's controlling your out-of-pocket cost to being about 25% of payroll right now, because the state's picking up that other 10%. I think everyone's concern is the state is doing that because they're able to, and if they're not able to, because the economy turns, you know, districts once again are going to be left with that spike in the retirement rate, which will be challenging.
Is there any, sorry. Is there any long-term forecasting of what that percentage will look like five, 10, 15 years?
Yeah, so that 35% mark had been forecast, and, you know, the state had put in reforms to, to the benefit levels and the way that each of the staff were contributing to their own retirements. And the intent of that was to, you know, cap it and ultimately get it trending back downward.
Right.
So I haven't seen anything that ever has it going above that 35% mark. That's sort of the worst-case scenario right now. It's just going to take such a long time for all those other changes to take effect and have the actual real rate come back down.
Correct.
We've heard from the state that they're spending more on education than they have spent now than they have in any years past. Am I correct in saying that that is because of the contribution to the education employees' retirement?
Absolutely.
And it never touches a classroom?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, the actual foundation allowance, which would be the, you know, the discretionary dollars that are going out to districts, you know, for 1617, there's a modest increase, and for 1516, there's a modest increase, but those increases still don't replace the cuts that occurred several years ago.
Absolutely. The 470 that we took and cut in one, one year singularly.
Yeah. Yeah, and in the management letter, we do have an overview of some of those funding changes that have been in place, and also kind of a history lesson on what they've done with the retirement system.
And just for the benefit of the public that may not be aware, we, we did receive, and I don't remember the dollar figure, a substantial amount from the state to which we had to immediately write a check back for that exact amount back to the state.
That is correct, and I underline.
And therefore, that those dollars came to the school district, and we had to give them right back to the penny.
Yes.
For the purpose of retirement.
Yes.
So just so folks are aware, when you, when you hear that more is being spent on education, a whole lot more is being spent on pension that's running through the education system and right back out again to pension.
Exactly. Exactly. 14 million, you said, was the figure?
Yes.
14 million was Livonia's pension subsidy that it received this year.
Okay. Thank you.
So, after page 49, we have our required supplemental information, and this is the budgetary comparison schedule, which evaluates your budget-to-actual numbers at year end. We have your original budget posted or provided on here, along with your final budget passed, and we do look at the variances between what your final budget compared to actual amounts are. You can see that the total revenue was over budget by about $2 million, and the inter-district sources provided a bulk of that $2 million. And the inter-district sources represents Act 18 money that wasn't projected at the beginning of the year, that came in pretty late into the district's, pretty late into the district's hands. And you can see that the net change in fund balance, the bottom line, the final budget projected a $1.2 million increase in fund balance, and you were positive, you had a positive variance of 2.7 on top of that original 1.2 forecasted. So that represents a 1.9% positive variance or favorable results based on the final budget that's being passed. And it is illegal to exceed the budget amounts, and that's why I went over that Note 2 in a little bit of detail, because we have to disclose any significant variances. So conservatism is encouraged, so it's good to see that the district did come in favorable rather, as opposed to unfavorable. And I had alluded to the fact earlier that the general fund is consisting of the general fund, the funded projects, and the athletic fund. So, per the district's preference, we isolated the three funds that comprise the combined general fund, and you can see that the funded projects on page 51 comes to a break-even. And then same thing with the athletic activities on page 52. Beginning on page 53, we have a few other notes to the financial statements that are required, and these are for the net pension, or net pension liability. Page 56 starts us out on the other supplemental information, and this provides, the first schedule here, on page 57, provides the fund level detail for the non-major funds, and it's the non-major governmental fund combining balance sheet. As you can see, the activity's pretty insubstantial compared to what the major funds represented within the general and 2013 bond series on the face of the statements.
I always think that, you know, the one positive thing when I look at Livonia's financial statements, although you don't have a significant fund balance at all, your fund balance would be very small relative to the size of your district between the sinking fund and the, the bond funds. You do have at least your capital needs covered for a long time, and so that is good news when you have major building items that come up or technology needs. You have resources for those available to you.
And page 59 and 60 provides detail, again, for the non-major funds, indicating the Statement of Revenue, Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance within those non-major funds. And page 61 provides the information for the combining general fund, and again, we have the funds isolated between the general, athletic, and funded projects. And page 62 offer, provides a representation of the combining general fund for the Statement of Revenue, Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance. Page 64 through page 60, I'm sorry, there's page, page numbering issues, but again, this isn't our final draft. Through page 70, provides the detailed line items of the general fund, so provides on a function level, a very detailed description of your budget-to-actual results. And finally, we come to the Schedule of Bond Indebtedness, which just provides the bond principal due in subsequent years. And again, at year end, you had $217 million outstanding in bonds.
Any other questions on the basic financial statements?
The next deliverable item that we'd like to review with you is the Federal Awards Terry discussed the three libraries that are attached to this report, so I'm going to skim through those and direct your attention to the CIFA, and that begins on page 6. So the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards provides detail of the district's federal grants or federal awards that were provided to them during the course of 1516. 1516, Livonia had $7.9 million in federal awards, and the main components of that would be your Title I and IDEA grants, along with child nutrition. The page that really summarizes the single audit results is on page 9. So, page 9 indicates that we issued an unmodified opinion for the financial statements, the basic audit financial statements. We didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report. There were no non-compliance items, and the federal awards also did not include any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. The district qualified as a low-risk audit, meaning that there were no findings in the past two years, and next year you will also be a low-risk audit because there are no findings this year. And we also, we tested as major programs this year, Title I and the child nutrition And that concludes the federal awards report. I know that was a pretty brisk review of 11 pages. Does anyone have any?
Takes us two weeks to audit it and five minutes to say it was all good.
Any questions or comments?
No. All right. And the last item that I will cover, and I won't go through this in a lot of detail, so the report to the Board of Education. So this has three components to it. First is the results of the audit, which contains all of the required post-audit communications, then any recommendations, and then the informational items that talk about a lot of the current happenings in the financial and regulatory environment. So first, with regard to the results of the audit, all good and clean language here. It indicates that we were able to execute the audit as originally planned and discussed. We did not encounter any surprises or changes, anything that would require a change in scope of the predicted audit procedures. And we had terrific support from the business office staff and the grant staff. We did not have any audit adjustments that were identified as being anything of significance that was required to be passed on. There is one passed item that's noted, which is just a disclosure item that was elected to be omitted from the financial statements that we did not believe was a significant item relative to some of the district's legal matters that are taking place. It goes on to say just a couple of things. There are key estimates involved in the financial statements. The pension liability would be the largest item that we believe is a key estimate. And then we also discuss the fact that there were those accounting changes implemented that just deal with disclosure of the fair value of the investments. Within the recommendations section, which is page 7 of the letter, we have one just specific item we wanted to make sure you were aware of, which was there is a legal requirement that the fund balance within the Food Services Fund not exceed three months of expenditures. So the district's balance is over that, so you do need to have plans and have communication with Department of Ed about how those funds are going to be utilized and brought down. And then within the informational items, as I said, there's a lot of information in here about, about the funding of the retirement system and the funding in the State Aid Act that's gone into effect. We've got a recap of that early warning legislation that you were required to respond to last year. There is a discussion of that Michigan Education Finance Study that Ms. Zolquist had referred to, that's going to be discussed in the upcoming Town Hall session. Some discussion about some of the requirements for different grant administration procedures under new federal guidance. So there are some procurement policies that will be required to be put into effect for this year that were delayed from last year, so make sure that that is, that is on your radar to have those implemented this year. And those would be the highlight. Also, just a short recap, I'm sure your legal counsel's been talking with you about the new, the new overtime regulations, and there are some specific rules that apply in an educational setting that are a little bit unique, so we want to make sure you have that on your, on your radar as well.
We do, and our Human Resources Department and our, our legal representation are well apprised of that.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. So that, those are the three main deliverables. When we are returning for the regular board meeting, we obviously will not go through the presentation at this level of detail, but we will comment on the overall results of the audit and use our traditional slide presentation that shows some of the trend information and some of the main financial highlights in a graphic presentation. Are there any other questions we can help with?
I'm thrilled that we are no longer qualifying as an early warning district. I don't always say I can speak for others, but in that one, I will. And as a Board of Education, I would like to share my thanks to our employees who have worked very hard to make sure that we are getting out of that situation. First off, to a lot of our employees who picked up a lot of slack. We said a lot of our savings was in positions that we were able to not fill for a portion of a year. That meant that work was picked up by other people, and that happens in, in most businesses, and it certainly happens here, and our employees are, are to be commended. Also, I'd like to thank Allison and our entire business department. It is no small budget, and it's, it's no small task to keep this so close to budget, and we just appreciate all the efforts that have gone in on everyone's part. Let me see here. As far as the, the fund balance, we are now over 5%, which means we're not an early warning district. However, you alluded to the fact that with the size of our budget, we still have a very small fund balance.
Yes.
What is a, I mean, the first goal is to get out of the 5% or under range, denoting us as early warning. What should our target goal be?
Yes. So, in looking at the fund balance as a percentage of your operating budget, the state average is still at about eight, excuse me, 10 and a half percent if you take Detroit Public Schools out of the mix in that equation. We always pull them out because they distort the results, but so that would, that would still be the average fund balance for districts in Michigan, about 10 and a half percent. Michigan's school business officials had long ago recommended a 15% fund balance to alleviate the need for cash flow borrowing in a lot of instances, and also really safeguard against unpredictability and dips when the, when the state can't cover the pension obligation and those sorts of things. Obviously, most districts are not able to achieve that 15% in the current environment. So, I mean, we've, we've seen a number of districts adopt fund balance policies. 10% seems to be one that we see districts frequently choosing as their target fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
To add to that, the $8.3 million obviously is a large sum of money, but putting that in terms of our annual operating expenditures, if you were to take our annual expenditures and divide that by 365 days, that would be about $388,000 a day. So that 8.3 really represents 21 days of operating expenditure. So in terms of that, it puts it in perspective.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'd like to... Then I'd like to thank Ms. Pollak and Mr. Marquesi for wonderful presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you soon. Thank you.
Next, we'll consider the bulk salt purchase. Ms. Smith?
It makes you think ahead to the winter, so. Luckily, we've got no snow on the ground, but we know it's coming. So we'd like to bring this to you. We'd like to discuss the purchase of bulk salt for the coming 1617 year. And again, this year, just as we did last year, we'd like to make the purchase through the MyDeal through the state of Michigan. We found that to be the best pricing. And we're happy to report that this year, there's a reduction in the cost per ton of $11.61, so that'll be, bring us some savings. We are proposing the purchase of 1,500 tons of road salt, so enough to get us through. Does anybody have any questions?
President Burton?
If we wind up with a winter like two winters ago and we wind up needing more, is the company willing to hold this price for us or would we be looking at a higher price?
I believe we would have to renegotiate for anything above the 1,500. But we're hopeful that the 1,500 would be enough compared to what we used last year. We think that'll be sufficient to get us through.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Bonnefield?
We're going to put this on the October 17 through a vote, correct?
Yes.
And can I just go back to the audit? We're going to vote on that one as well.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Are we putting this on the consent agenda?
We could.
We could.
You don't want it on the consent agenda?
Well, it's $63,000, so no, I don't, no.
Okay. If one person doesn't want it, we won't have it.
That's fine.
We don't have it, so, okay.
Okay. And if there are no other questions, we'll move to our next item, which is the IDEA technology purchase. And that will be Ms. Smith, along with Dr. Terrell. Dr. Jen?
And just to get us started, thank you. With our IDEA, our special ed grant, we had some carryover funds available to us that we didn't spend in 1516 for 1617. So when Jen and I were getting together to prepare our budget for 1617, the first step we did was look at what are the needs of the program and do we need to, or should we earmark part of this carryover for that? And Jen has a recommendation.
So, thank you, Allison. Thank you, Ms. Jarvis and the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present an additional technology for students in our district with IEPs. As you know, the 2013 bond schools received Chromebooks as part of each school's technology improvement. However, there is still a need for additional technology for our students in our district with IEPs. Title I schools supplement the bond purchases with Title I funds. And I would like to supplement, as Allison said, the bond purchases with IDEA funds to obtain an additional 100 LG Chrome-based computers, which is an all-in-one wireless desktop Chrome device with a 21-inch monitor for better viewing for our students in resource programs, kindergarten through 12th grade. And additionally, 20 iPads for our preschool, early childhood programs. Resource staff would utilize this additional technology for increased access for our students with IEPs to accommodations such as speech-to-text, text-to-speech, word processing, and one of the programs that you allowed us to purchase last year, Snap and Read, which levels reading for some of our students who struggle with reading, as well as translates over 100 foreign languages for our students as well. In addition, the statewide assessments, both M-Step and MyAccess, require daily usage of accommodations for students with IEPs. And this would be an additional resource for our resource programs for our students to access those accommodations. For our early childhood staff, they would utilize the 20 iPads in our preschool programs to increase socialization as well as communication for our preschool-age students with disabilities. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. The iPads, do they come with, are they pre-programmed with any special programs for our students?
They come with the basics on there, but some of the information that we would add on there, like ProLoCo, which is a communication system for our students, that would be additional purchases on the iPads for our students.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bonnefield?
What about charging stations and carts and stuff like that? Are there, how are they handling that with these new, or are they just onesies and twosies and it's?
Yep. Onesies and twosies, plug into the wall, good to go.
Okay.
Another item on this one, we're proposing making the purchase through the RMC bid website, so we are not going out to bid for this one.
All right. If anyone has any other questions or comments?
Are we voting on this one?
October 17.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell.
Thank you. Thank you.
President Burton, that is all for the Finance Committee tonight.
All righty. The next item on our agenda is Item 4, Curriculum Committee. Laura, do you have anything?
President Burton, I do not have anything tonight. Let me check. Mrs. Ellis, nothing. Thank you.
All right. Next, Item 5 is Building Insight. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. There's nothing unless we have additional items.
That would be me.
It would be you.
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
We do not, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6 of Legislative Committee, Mrs. McDonald?
President Burton, I do not. Mrs. Oquist?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Other than our reminder about our town hall meeting coming up.
Absolutely.
One more plug today. Item 7, our Policy Committee, Mrs. Bonnefield? I don't have anything.
Just that we are, still need to work on the EDDB and I'll work with Mrs. Oquist on that.
Yes.
And then, is it soon enough for everyone to bring that back to a study session?
We'll bring something back. Mrs. Scott has already begun work on that.
Okay.
And so we will bring that to the October 24 study session, which we will hold at Franklin.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And that would conclude everything I have.
Okay. And Item 8, Personnel Committee, Mr. Sanders?
No.
Nope. All righty. This might go on record as one of our fastest committee of the whole meetings, but we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you for tuning in with us, and we will see you back again on October 17 for our next general meeting. We are adjourned.